Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Thank you. So our first order of business this evening is that we have a proclamation recognizing the Chesapeake Climate Action Network, CCAN, and volunteers for their work removing invasive vines and protecting trees in the city. I will, I know we have a representative from CCAN here. Great. Oh, there you are. I will read the proclamation for everyone to hear. Whereas the Chesapeake Climate Action Network is a grassroots nonprofit organization based in Tacoma Park and dedicated to fighting global warming in Maryland, Virginia, and Washington DC. And whereas trees serve an important role in mitigating climate change, provide protective and heat-reducing shade, reduce stormwater runoff, provide wildlife habitat, and improve human health and well-being. And whereas invasive vines threaten the health of trees and alter an ecosystem on a fundamental level, and climate change is contributing to increased spread of invasive vines and other plants. And whereas CCAN commissioned a survey of trees in Tacoma Park and Tacoma Park residents and native plant specialists Jess Buff conducted the survey in February of 2021. And whereas the survey found that a total of 4,850 trees were infested with vines and could die within five to seven years from being overwhelmed by the vines. And whereas the majority of these trees were older than 20 years, with some more than 100 years old, and most could be saved with just 10, five to 10 minutes using current common garden tools. And whereas volunteers organized by CCAN removed vines from more than 500 trees in the city in 2020 and over 2,000 trees so far in 2021 as part of a weekly Saturday morning program for volunteers to adopt between 10 to 100 trees per person for rescue. And whereas these steps by CCAN and dedicated volunteers have helped save and will save many trees and serve as a model of action for other communities. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff, do hereby express appreciation for the Chesapeake Climate Action Network and volunteers for their service to our community. So, thank you so much for being here. Mr. Buff, I don't know if you want to say a few words and in particular make sure people know how they can volunteer to help you all out in your efforts. Oh, we can't hear you. Oh. Yeah, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, now we can hear you.
Rookie move there and forgetting to unmute. That's so cliched in the last year and a half. I've actually got Mike Tidwell, the executive director, on the phone. He said he wasn't able to join. That it wasn't, he wasn't being allowed to join this Zoom meeting. So I don't know if if we, if he could say a few words over the phone and I could say a few words live.
Sure, absolutely. We would love that.
Mike, do you want to say a few things?
We really appreciate this recognition. We are so fired up about this project to remove all 5,000 of the trees in Tacoma Park that we know are in danger of succumbing to invasive vines. We're close to 3,000 trees now. And we hope that this will be a model for the Federal Civilian Climate Corps, which is still in the Build Back Better Plan. In fact, its funding has tripled in the last few weeks. And we want to take this model from Little Tacoma Park and share it with the Civilian Climate Corps. And hopefully we can replicate this all over the country. So on behalf of our volunteers and our members and our board of directors, we appreciate your recognition. And we're going to keep going until we solve this problem here and hopefully everywhere.
Thanks, Mike. Is it okay if I say a word or two?
Yeah.
So just, just so everyone knows, you can sign up for our volunteer workdays. Every Saturday at 8:30, we meet, we meet at the Co-op. You could sign up on ChesapeakeClimate.org. I wanted to thank Cindy and Casey, our council members, for putting this information out to their wards. And if any of the other council members have done so, I appreciate that. I'm happy to forward you information on how you can get this information out to your wards. We've got volunteers working. I don't want to say around the clock, but they're working in all the wards of the city. We couldn't do it without them. We've had 265 volunteers since this program started in April. 131 of them have been unique. So the remainder are repeat volunteers, many of them Tacoma Park residents. We've had 30 events since April and we've cleared vines off of 52% of the identified trees in Tacoma Park. And that's 2,625 as of today.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for all your work on this. And we look forward to coming out and joining you one Saturday.
Thanks. We hope so.
Definitely. Thank you. And I just want to give a special thanks to Councilwoman Kostic for helping to, really writing the proclamation. I do want, this is a team effort here. And she collected and worked with CCAN on a lot of the data. So I just want to thank Councilwoman Kostic for doing that. Great. Well, thank you very much. And thank you to CCAN for all its great efforts and work in our community and region generally.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and council members.
All right, now we will move on to, let's see, we have public comments. Our first public comment tonight are on our voting item. We have one voting item this evening, which is a resolution adopting our 2022 legislative priorities. And I know we have one person signed up for that. They are ready to go.
Mayor Stuart Fird Hefner is, is here now.
Great. Okay.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Fird Hefner, nearing four decades on Montgomery Avenue in Ward 3, and also a member of Presbyterians for Police Transformation, which is part of our committed racial mindfulness initiative at the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. In fact, we're meeting tonight, so I will be brief and get to my meeting. But I just wanted to applaud you for including the police reform in your draft legislative priorities. Obviously, a lot has been accomplished in the last year's General Assembly on police reform, but there's so much more to do and implementation challenges really are paramount now at the state level and also at the county level. So just wanted to thank you for retaining that as a priority. This is really important work. Presbyterians for Police Transformation, we're working closely with Action in Montgomery or AIM and its Police Reform Committee, as well as AIM's new District 20 initiative to stay on top of advocacy opportunities at the state and county level in particular. I just wanted to also flag that we're very grateful that you did a shout out for Delicate Charcutian's efforts to increase funding for mobile crisis units. We advocated strongly for her bill last year and intend to do so again in this coming year. Or, and will work with other AIM groups, AIM-type groups around the state to gain greater support for that effort. So anyway, on that note, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see later on your agenda, you have a staff update on implementing the recommendations of the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. And assuming our, my meeting ends in time, I'll try to be back to hear that. As, as you know, as you all know, the task force recommended a community assistance office and a community safety team that closely tracks with Lorg's bill and closely tracks with the recent Montgomery County announcement expanding their efforts on mobile crisis units. I just want to remind you that the task force made the recommendation with which our group completely concurs that initial funding for the community safety team be prioritized in the ARPA funding. And that once the pilot is launched, that there be a evaluation and a decision about how to turn it into a permanent funding structure. So in closing, it's, it's my sincere hope that staff will address this tonight, that recommendation from the task force, and that the council, without much further delay, will actually act on it and allocate first-year ARPA funding to make it a reality and fulfill that critical piece of reimagining public safety. And fulfilling the task force's good work in that regard. So thank you for your consideration on that. And we'll certainly remain in touch on this critical public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, let's see, now we will move to general public comments. And we had a couple of folks signed up, but the only one I see at the moment is Ms. Mary Jane Machui. So we will go to Ms. Machui.
Oh, hi, everybody. Happy Native American Heritage Month. I, I was listening, following this mobile crisis team. It's a step in the right direction, but it is underlying, it is not enough. It's temporary. Somebody just comes and takes, speaks to someone and, you know, two days later, they're out on the street. I mean, come on, this is just a Band-Aid. Something, we need more help. I have a son who's 36 years old. We're low income, sharing this tiny little two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. I mean, it's like apartment-sized house. And it's driving me nuts. It's driving him nuts. He's 36 years old. He shouldn't be living with me. I mean, he's going to end up in the street when I can't be with him much longer because he's working part-time. It's very difficult to get a job when you've got special needs. You've got autism, depression, right-brain learning disability, bipolar, whatever. It's very difficult to stay off of the street. Okay? He does not make enough money. He's gonna, he's gonna be ended up on the street and probably in prison. He's black, which also makes it a lot, he's, makes it a lot more sensitive. I mean, I mean, what's going to happen to him? He was born here for 36, 36 years ago. He was born in this town, for God's sakes. You can't even help him? Thank you. You will have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machui. I realize that I skipped to the proclamation and forgot to do our upcoming agenda items. I was so excited about the CCAN proclamation, so I will go back to that now. Let's see, today is November 3rd. Our next week meeting will be on Wednesday, November 10th. We will begin at 7:30. We begin that evening with a presentation of the new AV BikeWay, the 60% designs for Section B. Our voting items next week are First Reading Ordinance Regarding Council Compensation, Single Reading Ordinance Awarding Contract for Compensation and Pay Equity Study, Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of a Loader for Public Works, First Reading Ordinance Awarding Contract for Organizational Workforce Needs and Risk Assessment Study Services, First Reading Ordinance Amending the Tacoma Park Code to Require Installation and Maintenance of Window Guards in Certain Rental Housing. And our work session that night is a presentation of draft redistricting maps. And then on Wednesday, November 17th, our meeting begins at 7:30. We'll have presentations of the FY 2021 Audit, a presentation of the Police Pension Plan Actuarial Valuation. Voting session that night will be the Second Reading Ordinance of Council Compensation, a work for Contract for Organizational Workforce Needs and Risk Assessment, Second Reading on the Tacoma Park Code to Require the Installation and Maintenance of Window Guards, Single Reading Ordinance Approving for a Contract for Construction Management Services, Single Reading Approving the Purchase of Replacement Police Vehicles, Resolution Providing for the City Council's Winter Recession. And our work session that night will be a Housing and Community Development Director Update, including annual reports from the Coral Langley CDA and the Old Town Business Association. This will be our last meeting, our regular meeting before the winter recess. We will have a meeting on Wednesday, December 1st. That is our regular meeting that we have with our joint meeting that we have with our D-20 team every year. That meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, so remember 7:00 PM. We do ask the people for that meeting, sign up ahead of time and before that day, like we do for our other meetings, but just want to make sure we have that so that we can get to talking to the delegation that night. They will present their, what they're planning on working for towards the, in the upcoming session in Annapolis. And we will present our legislative priorities. And that will take us then into January for our next meeting. So I'm just double checking to see, I don't think the other folks who signed up for public comments have joined us. Am I, I'm just asking the city clerk, am I correct?
Correct. The others have not joined.
All right. And I see it's 7:45. So I think we will then move on with our agenda. The, what we have first is adoption of minutes. We are adopting tonight the minutes from June 2nd, 7th, 9th, 14th, 23rd, and 30th. Do I have a motion to adopt those minutes? Councilwoman Kostic moved. Do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, any questions, comments, changes? I had sent the city clerk just a minor change to my name in one of them earlier, but other than that, I think. All right, seeing no changes. Will the clerk call the vote on adopting the minutes?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stuart.
Yes. All right, then we now will move to our voting session. We have a resolution adopting our 2022 legislative priorities. We did have a work session. Oh, I'm like, you're right. Thank you. I don't know what I'm doing today. Just like getting us through the agenda. We have council comments. Anyone on council have comments? Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. I will let you go first, Councilmember Siemens.
I thank you. Last time we met and we talked about the recommendations for committee appointments and the boards and commissions. There were a few questions. One of those questions was about the demographics and desire for a little more specifics on the demographic mix of the recommendations. It's a little too lengthy to read tonight, but what I, it is posted on the Agenda webpage so that you can look at the summary that the subgroup put together. And I would just like to highlight the fact that we made some significant progress in regards to racial and ethnicity. We, we have much more diverse volunteers being assigned to these committees or approved for these committees and commissions. But we, we're not as far as we want to go. And that's something that I think everybody recognizes is going to take some time to accomplish. And the one area where we were disappointed in the slight amount of change that we made is in the area of award and age diversity. We have a lot of progress to make there. And again, it seems like the, it's the same awards present the problems that with four, five, and six. And again, I think we can recognize that this is probably the more difficult, more difficulty that people face in volunteering for this community action if they don't have, if they're spending most of their time trying to support their families. And so I think it's an economic diversity issue. And I hope that some of the other actions this council has taken is going to help to overcome that in the future. Anyways, you can check that out on the Agenda website or webpage tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Next, we have Councilwoman Kostic.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to start off by, again, congratulating CCAN for the proclamation and thanking CCAN and all the volunteers. I would really like to join one of these Saturday mornings. I haven't been able to yet, but would really like to. So I'm looking forward to doing that. And thank you, Councilmember Siemens, for the overview of that information regarding committee applicants. I just wanted to kind of briefly go through and let folks know that I had emailed earlier today with a document that the subgroup put together, outlining some initial thoughts on the different roles of committee members, the council liaison that works with committees, and then the council liaison position, which we have sort of talked a little bit about in prior council meetings, the idea of having a council member who would be assigned to liaise with a committee. And so just wanted to note that in our discussions, what we were trying to do was ensure that committees had strong connections with staff members so that they could work with staff and understand kind of the processes that are happening and really be effective in their committee work and also be well-connected with the council so that they know what the council is doing. And we are kind of updated on what they're doing and we can work together. But also balance that with making sure that committees are free to make their own recommendations, to do their own work, aren't unduly influenced by staff or council. And so our sort of outlines in terms of putting things together were aimed at just kind of defining specific roles so that there wasn't confusion or ambiguity and people kind of understood what those roles were. So that's something that I think maybe the, the subgroup that is meeting later to work on making some recommendations with regard to processes for the council overall might, might want to make further recommendations on. And we can discuss as a full council and kind of figure out our processes. But just wanted to kind of circulate that and get that out there so that people were thinking about it. Also, just a couple of other updates with regard to our discussions on committees. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Carpenter, but I just wanted to summarize some of the work that's happening next. It's my understanding that staff are working on finalizing the handbook and working on orientation plans for new committee members who will be coming on board. And that orientation will be happening between now and January as committee members come on board. And I think we'll, we can expect to hear some updates in terms of just the logistical implementation of the stipends that we put in place as well. So that's all for me, but hopefully we can continue to talk about these things. And if staff have further updates, welcome those as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I want to thank Jackie, Sharonda, and Faith and others that helped host the Halloween event at Essex House on Sunday. I want to also thank the residents that came by, got some candy, got a chance to talk to folks. I really appreciate you engaging in this. And now it's, I guess, an institution, a perennial event. So I really appreciate you guys coming out. I want to thank Green Bay Belt Mayor Colin Byrd and the City of Detroit for passing a referendum to form committees to look at preparations. This does not replace HR 40, but it just shows the interest throughout this country at looking at repair. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I also appreciate CCAN and all of the work that you all are doing. And I will make it out to one of the Saturday morning sessions. You all are early risers and I'm not, but I will make an exception for you all to, to join you on Saturday morning. Couple of quick updates. It's surprising that we weren't in session last week, but I want to give a special thanks to the Hillwood Manor community. Last Saturday, they had a neighborhood picnic, which included a sneak peek of an art project that will be installed in the Hillwood Manor community garden area this spring. So I will, I won't share too much, but it was a very, very large, very wonderful project that also involved trying to spot your neighbors. it was a very, very large, very wonderful project that also involved, um, trying to spot your neighbors because the artist, actually, um, did drawings of, uh, incorporated residents in the community in the various art pieces. So, um, it was a really, really wonderful opportunity to come out and I definitely want to thank, um, Pam Spahn, Lynn, and all of the, the residents, Gil, all the residents in Hillwood Manor, uh, for inviting me out. Also, want to thank, um, the Rec Department for the wonderful, wonderful Monster Bash on Saturday. I was floored at the number of families and children that came out. Um, I think it was probably more people than before the pandemic. It felt that way at least. So it was great to be able to be out there and to see all of the kids enjoying themselves. So special shout out to the Rec Department. I know it's a lot of work to put that on and, and, and you all did it with a smile. So thank you so much for that. And also want to thank the New Hampshire Gardens, um, Community Association for, um, the holiday, um, block party on Sunday. Um, the, I call it the trick or treat of free game, uh, where all of the kids are able to come out and gather as an, as a neighborhood and just have fun and, and, and play with one another and have some candy. So thank you all so much for, um, making this a, it felt very pre-COVID this weekend and I, and it was because of all of the hard work that so many people have been doing. Um, and that is all that I have. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, thank you. Um, so following on a theme, um, I also want to thank not just the Rec Department, but all the city staff and the Police Department for a great weekend. And I agree, it was wonderful. And feeling very, um, reinvigorating for me. I, I really loved seeing all my neighbors and their kids. It was a lot of fun. One more thing on committees. Thank you, uh, to the city staff for all the work that you've done over the last couple of years to get us to this point. We, all the different council members that have worked on different parts of this, really, really appreciate it. It's, it's, we couldn't, it, we couldn't be at this point with, um, with implementing these changes without you. And, um, I'm hoping that we can stand up the, what, following up on what Councilmember Kostic said about orientation and training, I'm hoping we can stand up the short-term task force a little sooner than the rest. But the schedule that was outlined for training and orientation and then starting up many of the other groups in January sounds, sounds just right. Also to the CCAN team and all the War Two residents and city residents that have been involved in, in this. Thank you for, for, I'm in thanks mode tonight, I guess. Thank you for, um, for all you've done there because that's just been awesome. And I know better than to promise eight-thirty on a Saturday morning. So you may or may not see me. But for those residents who, uh, want to learn more about trees and, uh, invasives, invasive vines, but tree care in general, Conservation Montgomery is doing a workshop this weekend, this Saturday, ten AM to twelve in the, um, in the Forest Park area. It's an on-the-ground, look at the trees in the neighborhood, talk about how to care for them workshop. If you're interested and you're not signed up, contact me and I'll put you in touch with them. It's not a city event, but we've, these have been very popular within the city in, in past years. And I guess last but not least, um, for the, again, the Police and Public Works Departments, thanks for all the attention on, um, preparing for this State Highway Administration meeting next week and particularly on traffic safety and pedestrian and biker safety issues. And I would like to say that it's not in War Two. It's not only Ethan Allen and Elm Avenue. That's a concern, but Carolyn Lincoln and Flower Avenue, Lower Flower Avenue and, um, Auburn, uh, there are traffic and pedestrian and biker safety related issues in all of those areas as well, which I'm sure we'll be able to, to, uh, to work with. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
That, that was me, Mayor. I, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Councilmember Kovar, yeah.
Thank you. Um, to repeat a few things that others have said, I also want to express my appreciation to the staff and to everybody who was involved in the Monster Bash. And, and just by way of, um, data, I had to stop by the community center today and I ran into one of the Rec Department staff in the hallway downstairs. They said they had prepared a little bit over one thousand goodie bags for kids, all of which were given away. And so if you assume that there's at least one parent per, uh, child, there were probably over two thousand people participating, which is really unbelievable. And I think several of my colleagues suggested maybe people were really feeling a a yearning to get out there and interact with others. And I think it was a, a safe setup outside. So I think it was really great. So thanks for that. Uh, secondly, on, uh, CCAN also, I just want to express my appreciation for that recognition. It's one of our great homegrown organizations here in Tacoma Park. And so it's great that they're doing excellent work in the region and even more widely, but they haven't forgot about where they're, where they're based here in the city. So I really appreciate that. And as far as the committee diversity goes, and we don't have the opportunity to talk about that because it's a consent agenda later this evening, I just want to say that I, I had been uncertain about the diversity, which I had expressed the last time we took it up. And I've looked over everything and I think the members of the working group who vetted the appointments have done an excellent job. And I, and I do think maybe even, um, there's always more to be done, of course, but I think Councilmember Siemens might have undersold it a little bit because when I looked at the total listing everywhere, not that geographical is the only piece of it because there, there are racial and ethnic and economic renter versus house, uh, homeowners and all of those things, but it looked like it, that wards one, five, and six were pretty similar in terms of the numbers of people. So I think progress is being made and I appreciate that. And then, and then the last thing is I just want to mention the, uh, city attorney had sent a, a letter a few weeks back about, um, with his legal interpretation about Dorothy's Woods. And I just did want to say that I appreciated that there were two components to that. One is any sort of major project has to be done in the context of developing some sort of stewardship program, which I think can happen through the public space, uh, management plan that, that we're continuing to work on. But the city attorney did make it clear that uh, smaller key, uh, lower level kinds of things like maintenance and, um, litter pickup and so on can be done uh, absent that completion of the stewardship plan in cooperation with Public Works. And so I just want to say, if, if Public Works separately, not tonight, can just let people know, uh, how best to get in touch with them to initiate that. I know others of my colleagues have already been working on this, which I appreciate too, but um, I've been, uh, I was in a meeting recently with some people from Ward One who were just interested. So I wanted to just get that out there. And so I'd appreciate the staff responding separately to the council on how people could get involved with that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I have a couple of updates. Um, the one, just want to add my thanks to everyone who put on a successful Monster Bash. And, um, I think the pictures of the winners are actually just up on Twitter and Facebook. So if you didn't get a chance to see, um, some of the great shots, um, they're, they're going to be up there soon. I want to thank, uh, Meals on Wheels, um, this week, uh, Tacoma Park and Silver Spring. I got to have a chance to deliver some meals with them on, um, Monday. Um, they, uh, prepare over one hundred hot meals a day, uh, to deliver to residents, um, in our community. And so, um, they're, um, located actually in New Hampshire Avenue in Ward Six. Um, and they have a, a great, um, system all set up. They've expanded under COVID, uh, and I just encourage folks to, um, get to know them as well in our community. Last week, I had the opportunity to represent, represent our city at a Town of Chevy Chase, um, meeting, um, as they are contemplating sixteen and seventeen-year-old voting, um, in the Town of Chevy Chase. And so, um, I got to be there with the Mayor of Mountain Rainier and the Mayor of, uh, Riverdale to talk about, um, our experiences. So hopefully that we will add the Town of Chevy Chase to another, uh, city in Maryland that has sixteen and seventeen-year-old voting. Uh, heads up on, um, an event coming up on November thirteenth, uh, we will have a ribbon cutting at, uh, businesses, uh, that have opened in our community and, um, thanks to the Old Town Business Association and the Crossroads Development Authority. They are arranging a day of ribbon cutting. And I am glad to say it is a day that is packed. We've had a number of new businesses open in the last year and a half, uh, in our community. And so I'm, I'm glad to get to, uh, try some snacks at the Brazilian Bakery, um, check out our new tattoo artist who's in town and to see uh, the new extension on the Montessori School on Carroll Avenue. So I hope folks are able to join us. Uh, I think Laura will be putting out, um, where we will be in the time soon, but they'll be on November thirteenth. So maybe people can, uh, stop by while we're out there and join us in the celebration. Um, and I think that is all I have this evening. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only item that I have this evening is just to, uh, inform you and council and residents that, uh, now that the CDC has approved Pfizer, uh, vaccines for five to eleven-year-olds, uh, the, the city, we are looking at, uh, trying to work towards conducting a clinic, um, sometime over the next couple of weeks. Nothing is confirmed, but we're, we're working with some of our partners in the community. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, all right, now we will go to our voting item this evening. It is adopting our 2022 legislative priorities. This is what happens when we skip a week of meetings. I get out of practice. Looking, I just want to highlight a number of things and, um, thank our, uh, Anne Seacock, who I think has joined us this evening, um, for, hi Anne, for, uh, helping us with our work session a couple of weeks ago and then helping pull together the, um, uh, resolution on the legislative priorities. Um, this is posted on the city website for just to highlight and remind people of a few things. We identified, um, as a top priority, mitigating the impacts of the pandemic on residents, businesses of the city through, um, supporting efforts on increasing, um, rental assistance, providing, and I'm paraphrasing here, providing funds directly to, um, support residents, businesses, and local government and address food insecurity. So it's the first big, um, bucket of items. The next is increase access to affordable and energy-efficient housing for residents of Tacoma Park by supporting efforts to increase funding to support the development of affordable housing and other community development projects, um, requiring the district courts to collect and share timely, dynamic data related to the, um, execution of evictions past just cause eviction, um, in order to, uh, stabilize housing in communities, provide targets and resources to dramatically improve the energy efficiency of buildings, especially low and middle-income housing and multifamily buildings, and shield court records related to value-to-pay judgments that are used to prevent renters from obtaining housing. Our next large bucket was on mitigating the impacts of climate change by supporting efforts to pass legislation establishing aggressive statewide targets, facilitate greater use of zero-emission vehicles, public transit, and other decarbonizing transportation strategies, assess municipalities with resources and technical support to meet state and local climate mitigation and adaptation goals, and establish environmental health as a human right. Our next big category is reimagining public safety by supporting efforts to continue to enact reforms that hold police accountable, including at the municipal level, and increase, increase support for behavioral health crisis system that increases the opportunity for intervention by health professionals and minimizes the presence of police. The next was encourage timely Purple Line construction and mitigation efforts, support expanded funding flexibility, uh, flexibility for municipalities to mitigate funding dependent on property taxes, continued efforts to meet zero, vision zero goals for pedestrian safety, ensure that any movement toward legalization of cannabis utilizes the revenue generated to investing communities disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, and support efforts to consolidate election ballots. So that's a lot of things that are our priorities this year. As, um, every year, you know, we will pass this, we will share this with our delegation. I will, um, also, um, be testifying at, um, the, um, priorities hearing that, um, will be held soon, I think, actually, in a couple of weeks, to, um, represent the city in doing that. As always, um, or not as always, but, um, as in, uh, years past, we have a working group of council members because as things start moving in Annapolis, as Anne well knows, um, things move quickly. Um, and so we have our priorities and myself, Councilmember Dibala and Kovar will be the, um, working group for the council so that if something needs to be acted upon quickly, we will be following this list of priorities. And so I think with that, I will ask if someone would like to move the resolution. Um, Councilwoman Dibala, do I have a second? Councilwoman Circe, uh, and I know I think Councilmember Kovar has an amendment to offer. Councilmember Kovar, did you want to offer? Yeah.
I don't know if the, um, document can be shared or how we're doing that. What's, what's, what makes the most sense?
I think I can share my, I can, I'll see if I share the right one. Yes, I think I did. All right. Can people see that? I think it was, am I correct? It's on, up at the top on housing?
Right. Thank you. Yeah, it was in the, um,
This one.
The next one, actually, the next, the second square bullet there, right. No, that's not it. Sorry. It's higher up.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, it's under mitigate the impacts. Yeah, it's that one there. Right. And I talked to the second square, um, the second, the first square one, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
I had talked to, um, Ms. Seacock about this. And so my only question or concern was that when it says increase the ability of renters to access legal counsel and emergency rental assistance that supports landlords and property owners, the implication is, and I, I don't think this is, um, what we mean, but the implication is that the emergency rental assistance could be interpreted from this as only supporting landlords and property owners, whereas I think we, I, I believe we, we all, uh, support the notion that emergency rental assistance, sure, could, uh, support landlords and property owners. And that's not important, but it's also to support the renters. And so, I think if we could just say, emergency rental assistance that supports tenants, landlords, and property owners, really just adding that one, uh, word in there after supports, uh, unless Anne has, has a different formulation for that, uh, just to make that clear. So I would propose.
It would just, could you read the whole sentence? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, but, increase the ability of renters to access legal counsel and, and emergency rental assistance that supports tenants, landlords, and property owners. So after the word tenants, after the word supports, putting in the word tenants.
Got it.
Does that make sense? And, and I, I, I would just ask Anne if that seems to address the point appropriately.
Absolutely. We certainly didn't mean at all to, to leave out renters getting direct assistance. Um, absolutely.
Great. Would someone like to second that amendment? Sorry, I can't see everybody. If somebody is raising their hand.
I can second.
Councilmember Se, I guess, Councilmember Siemens, okay. Um, any discussion on the amendment or changes to the amendment? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the amendment. I will stop sharing my screen.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Councilwoman Dibala, do you have a question or comment? You're on mute. You're still on mute.
If we're, if we're done with that, I just wanted to highlight for folks, particularly for the public, this is a very detailed list. It's detailed because that's to the degree that we know that specific bills are returning or are coming up, that, that we wanted to be as specific as possible. It does not preclude other similar bills being proposed in the future that we would support because they fit in with our policy. And that's in here at the end just for folks who may be sitting home wondering what happens if the third square bullet on the second page gets amended? Does that mean the city can't support it anymore? No, the intent is to work in these areas and to. No, the intent is to work in these areas and to support legislation that reflects our policies that we've had in the past. So I hope that helps. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. All right. And I think just also to remind folks that sometimes we also look at what's happening in Annapolis and we may, you know, depending on how bills are moving and other things, the city of Tacoma Park may be more vocal on other things than on other bills. We work, you know, closely with our colleagues in Annapolis, with advocacy organizations on that. So these, these are our priorities and sometimes you'll see us be active on some things more than others. And we try, we do try and work in close collaboration with folks so that we help, we help and we don't hurt. So sometimes it's not helpful to hear from Tacoma Park. All right, seeing no other comments, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the resolution. Sorry, I did see Ann, Councilmember Smith.
In the same block that Councilmember Kovar brought up, what's the different definition of landlord and property owner?
I don't think I've ever thought that through. That is just a phrase that we are, that is so commonly used in the advocacy work in this area in Annapolis. You could certainly be a property, property owner and not a landlord. Can you be a landlord? And you could be, you could be a landlord, perhaps and not own the property?
Is the property owner getting at residential property or owner occupied property?
So, so I think it can be, so, so as a, you know, a landlord might be, you know, the legal definition may even include somebody who sublets, anybody to whom rent is due legally. So whether that's, whether that is the, the person who owns, you know, a, a, a single family home that, or you know, a house that has multiple rooms in it, or if it's a company that owns a, a multifamily apartment building, I think it's just to be inclusive.
And, you know, sometimes there could be a partnership where one entity literally collects the rent, but there could be a second group or individual that has some ownership which the tenants never see day to day and don't think of as a landlord, but could still be the property owner. So I don't know whether it's sort of bell and suspenders to mention them both. I'm not sure.
And I, and I want to offer as well that, you know, I, I think that, that, you know, there are instances where, you know, you're, you're talking about, I think it's, it's much to, to Councilmember Kovar's point that you could have a, you know, a, a business that owns, you know, some, some property and, and but, but runs it, you know, as a, as a landlord, as a, as a property manager. But you could also have somebody who owns property who needs to, you know, pay the mortgage. So I really do think it's, it's meant to, to cover both types.
Okay, I'm just, just curious. I mean, I have an associate broker's real estate license and I, I, I mean, I don't understand why you need to cover both, but that's fine.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Okay, now I just wanted to make sure. I'm seeing no other hands. Well, clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe? Mayor Stewart?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Seacock, for joining us. We look forward to seeing you more frequently in the coming weeks. All right, that closes out our voting session. And so now the next
Mayor, there's
Sorry.
I'm sorry, but you were going to
Oh, the consent agenda. I, I really just see, this is the problem when I try and like just look at the agenda online and don't print it. Not doing that again. All right. So yes, we do have a consent agenda. Thank you for the reminder. It, that this is the resolutions providing for appointments to our various committees that we've discussed earlier tonight and we have been discussing for the many months. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilmembers Circe moved, Councilwoman Dibala seconded. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay. And I just once again want to really thank my colleagues, especially Councilwoman Circe, Dibala, Kostick and Siemens for all their work on moving us and getting us to this position. So I think it's, you're almost done with the work, but there may be a smidge more that needs to get done. So you're not quite done yet. So, all right. Now, I think we are moving on to our work session for this evening. And I just, I'm gonna, I think, turn it over to our city manager. Tonight, we're reviewing the Public Safety Task Force recommendations and getting feedback from the city staff. And I just, one, just want to acknowledge and thank Councilwoman Circe and Siemens for all their work on last year, starting and seeing the task force really through all of its work through July when they presented their final report to us. And I'm glad that, I thank the staff for all their work over the last few months really to review this and take their time to think about how, what are the things that we're implementing and their feedback on where we can go from here with these recommendations and how we start working on them. So I'm gonna, or continue in some circumstances. So I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Members of council before you this evening. We will be providing the presentation on the topic of reimagining public safety. This is a continual conversation, an ongoing conversation, and will not be our last as we move forward in the weeks ahead. Tonight, you will hear from several members of my leadership team consisting of Chief Dibal, Director Alex Cross, our Housing Community Development Director, Director Greg Clark, our Recreation Director, and our Communications Manager, Donna Wright. I would ask that as we move forward, that council just withhold all questions until the end, until we can get through the staff presentation this evening. With that, can staff pull up the presentation, please? First off, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and the thought that went into the fifty-one recommendations by the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. Staff recognizes the importance of the work that either has been done underway or more analysis is necessary for the city to rethink and reconsider how we provide service delivery and our approaches of service delivery to the community. We also recognize that many of the recommendations, as we went through, do not necessarily relate to issues specifically here in Tacoma Park, but instead are national reform issues. And many of the recommendations involve coordination or involve better coordination with and being addressed with other organizations, whether that be the public schools, the county government, or other partners in the community. However, staff from all departments have reviewed the fifty-one recommendations made by the task force and they will share their perspectives as we look to reimagine not only public safety, but reimagine all city departments as we look towards resiliency and becoming a better resilient Tacoma Park. With that, I will turn it over to the chief.
I'm doing the same thing. I guess I haven't been on Zoom. I didn't unmute. We can move on to the next slide, please. Yeah, I just want to echo what the city, what City Manager Fox stated. You know, we, we, at the beginning of this process, we really embraced this process, although I think we have a phenomenal police department that is reflective of the community of Tacoma Park demographics and all kinds of backgrounds. I, I thought it was important that we take a holistic approach at public safety. So what we've done is we, the police department and all other departments in the city have reviewed all of the fifty-one recommendations. And we, today, we're going to highlight some of the things that were recommended and some of the things that we are already doing. So with that, you know, one of the things that, that the task force recommended was they wanted to increase transparency and awareness surrounding our public safety data. And they wanted the public release of all data related to arrests and traffic stop data. As many of you are aware, we put out this information in our annual report, but it did not break down arrests by race and so on and so forth. So what we did recently is we released all of our arrest and traffic stop data from two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty, and our computer-aided dispatch calls from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty. This information was interactive and broken down by race, gender, age, residency, initiation, type specific and offense. And even by race, it was disintegrated even further by type of arrest, race, gender and race, age, age and race, initiation and race, specific type and race and offense and race. This was really important to understand who we were stopping, why we were stopping them, and what the result of those stops and arrests were for. We also released all of our traffic stop information and also was disintegrated by race and similar categories. All of this information can be, can be found on the city website. I encourage you to go to the website if you've not done so. It is extremely interactive and really gives an overview of the last five years of arrests and traffic citations issued by the Tacoma Park Police Department. And we'll get into this, what some of that data means as we go through the presentation. Next slide, please. One of the things that, that the task force also recommended is we ensured that our patrol staff focus resources on serious crimes and de-prioritize minor infractions. One of the things when I became chief was I really, really wanted to emphasize a guardian approach and deemphasize unnecessary contacts with police in our community. So what we did is we refocused the traffic enforcement on serious offenses and, and had a less focus on less serious offenses. We revamped our reward and evaluation system. When I first got here, the evaluation system was really centered on arrest and citations and not necessarily centered on community engagement and problem solving. So if we were going to have a policy that centered around community engagement and problem solving, but we had an inconsistent reward system, you know, the two didn't match up. So that was one of the first things we did. What you'll find if you review the stats, the arrests and citations, you're going to see total arrests and citations of all types have declined significantly since two thousand fifteen. Also, you know, significant declines in arrests for minor infractions have occurred since two thousand fifteen. We also have seen a significant increase in arrests for serious offenses. What we really want to do is have focused traffic enforcement and focused criminal enforcement. So what we do is we utilize data to put officers in locations where we're having problems, not just randomly sitting on a traffic light or sitting at a fishing hole where people speed down a hill. That's not purposeful traffic enforcement. So what you see is, from our stats, is that emphasis. What you'll also see if you overlap where we issue our citations, meaning our traffic citations, you'll see that it overlaps where we also have traffic collisions. We also have complaints from the public regarding traffic complaints. So it's very, it's focused traffic enforcement and it's focused criminal enforcement. So what you see is you see a drastic reduction in the number of citations and arrests issued by the Tacoma Park Police Department. But what you also see is a continued reduction in crime. So this whole thought that, you know, arrests lead to decline, decline in crime is not true, indoor citations. So it's all about a real calculated and educated approach towards criminal enforcement and traffic enforcement. Next slide. No, like I spoke earlier about the guardian philosophy. One of the main reasons I applied to be chief here was the resolution that was put forward by the city council in two thousand seventeen about what the expectations were for the police department here at Tacoma Park. I've always had a guardian approach to law enforcement. That's why I became a police officer to serve. So we currently practice a guardian philosophy in policing. This philosophy is reinforced by police department policy and culture. It's also reinforced through the resolution that was passed through the city council. The guardian approach, as I talked about earlier, is also reinforced through our evaluation and reward system. Officers are rewarded for community engagement and problem solving. The de-emphasis was made to, to non-quality enforcement that was just there to satisfy, for lack of better terms, a quota. As I said, you see a large reduction in the number of traffic stops and arrests made by Tacoma Park Police Department. The guardian police philosophy is also reinforce the training. All staff are required to attend annual de-escalation training and crisis intervention training. This is critical, critical. If we expect officers to perform in a certain way, we have to train them to do so. All sworn staff recently attended active bystander for law enforcement training. This training reinforces the need for officers to intervene when other officers are not performing their duties professionally. Now, one would think, oh, that's unautomatic, but we want to condition officers that that's an expectation. It's an expectation if you see an officer doing something that they should not be doing, to intervene. You know, there were several other officers that sat there and watched the officer in Minneapolis visiting on George Floyd for over nine minutes. Now, one of those officers intervened. We expect our officers to intervene at any time when they see other officers misbehave. So we reinforce that with this active bystander for law enforcement training. In addition, all of our officers attend implicit bias training as well. You know, what is key, as I said earlier, we expect our staff to behave and act in a certain way. We have to provide the training and reemphasize it on an annual basis to get to the point where we want to be. Next slide, please. You know, one of the, the most important things, one of the most frustrating things for me was a lack of transparency in the investigations and complaints against police officers. You know, the, the former MPIA would not allow for us, the police department, to release, release certain information about certain investigations. And that created, you know, the appearance of secrecy. So, you know, the city of Tacoma Park is committed to be inaccessible and transparent. Number one, for the filing of complaints, we are always, we always encourage people to file complaints. I see it all the time. If you have an issue that you feel that you were not treated appropriately by Tacoma Park Police Officer, we want to care about it. We want to look into it and we want to resolve the situation. Complaints can be filed online via email, via phone or in person. Like I say, we encourage any residents to satisfy with their interaction to let us know. As I said, previously, state law prohibited the release of police disciplinary records if they were considered personnel records under the Maryland Public Information Act. This changed with State Bill one seventy-eight, which is Anton's law, which took effect October first of this year. It declared administrative or criminal investigations misconduct by police officers not to be deemed personnel records, thus releasable via the MPIA. You know, there are some, some issues with privacy and so on and so forth of this, but I think for transparency purposes, it's important that when, when we have issues and misconduct, that the public is aware. So we're working through, releasing a lot of information. We've had a lot of requests for information and we're obviously committed to compliance with State Bill one seventy-eight. Next slide, please. That, that, one of the other recommendations of the task force was prohibiting the militarization of civilian law enforcement. I have always been against military equipment. The city does not currently participate in the federal ten thirty-three program or any other federal program that transfers military equipment to civilian law enforcement. This is reinforced for our, our, our department policy. And we're evaluating the need. It just needs to also be reinforced through city policy as well. We think it's important that when, when we're implementing these recommendations, that we not only implement the, the recommendation, but we also find ways to memorialize that. I'm not going to be the chief of police forever here in the city of Tacoma Park. Mayor Stewart is not going to be the mayor. City Manager Fox is not going to be the city manager. So how can we memorialize what our expectations are for the police department and for the city? We don't need a tank from the federal government. Other agencies do that. We don't do that. Next slide, please. This is really important and this is one of the recommendations of the task force, and this is an absolute no brainer. And that's prevent the use of excessive force by police. We are committed to eliminating excessive force by police, period. We have a clear use of force policies, a use of force continuum, which calls for We have a clear use of force policies, a use of force continuum, which calls for the absolute least amount of force necessary utilized by city officers. We have very, very few use of force incidents in the city. However, all use of force incidents are fully documented and investigated to ensure compliance with policy and best practices in de-escalation. As I said earlier, all of our officers attend the escalation, annual de-escalation training. In addition, this is important as well, the vast majority of our officers are trained as crisis intervention officers. This allows them to utilize de-escalation techniques when dealing with individuals with mental distress. We utilized this earlier today. We had an individual that was suffering from mental distress and was under the influence of drugs. We were able to take him into custody without incident. So it's very, very important that our officers have the tools to be able to de-escalate these situations, not escalate them. So it's our goal, we have some newer officers, it's our goal to have all of our staff trained with that enhanced de-escalation training and that enhanced crisis intervention training. Next slide. You know, this is, this is really, really important to me as well. One of the recommendations of the task force was to recruit and retain a quality police force. I think I told the council when I first got here, my motto for, for hiring is quality, not quantity. But with the goal of having a police force that is reflective of its community in which we serve. We are committed to recruiting and retaining a quality workforce. We currently have a workforce that is reflective of the demographics of the city of Tacoma Park. That is important. Fifty-six percent of our staff have been hired within the last three years. Let me say that again. Fifty-six percent of our staff have been hired within the last three years. Of the twenty-eight staff that we hired in the last three years, twenty-two are members of minority groups and seven females. The group also has fluent in five different languages with eight fluent in Spanish. This is extremely important. We also are committed to the thirty by thirty initiative, which is a goal to have thirty percent of all sworn law enforcement in the United States be women by the year twenty thirty. Currently, we're at about twenty-one percent of our sworn staff are women. We're also committed to a wellness culture within the police department. And I don't say a wellness program, I say a wellness culture, because that's extremely important, that it's not just a program, it's a culture that enhances wellness within our, our, our staff. It has been extremely difficult two years for staff with COVID, with some of the national incidents. It's been stressful. And a lot of our staff have been stressed out. But it's important that we acknowledge that we're stressed out to not allow it to absorb us. I myself have openly said, yes, the last year and a half has been extremely difficult. It has been difficult on me and been strained on me. So if I don't acknowledge that and get help myself, how can I expect myself, my staff to be the same? So, you know, like I said, we're moving away from a wellness program and moving towards a wellness culture where employees have access not only to. Mental health, confidential mental health information, stress management tools and peer support. But most importantly, and the task force stresses, without the fear of retaliation. A lot of times, police officers are very hesitant to come forward when they're not feeling good. So we're trying to stress that it's okay to be okay. And one of the recommendations, to dive deep into this recommendation, was the task force really, really wanted to stress. The fact that officers and staff members could come forward without the fear of retaliation. So that's something we're working through with a wellness culture as opposed to a wellness program. But this one is still a work in progress as far as making sure that officers do not feel, number one, a stigma for coming forward. But number two, feel like they're going to be, you know, retaliated against by the administration. I, I think that's something we're working through. We're going to try to make sure that that is really instilled. And it's done by example. If someone comes forward and reports something, we need to embrace them and we need to follow the procedures the way we should. Next slide, please. This is probably the, of all of the recommendations, this is probably the most important one to me. And I think one of the biggest issues facing not only Tacoma Park, but, but our society in general. And that's mental health outreach and response. The task force really went into having tools to have a mental outreach team and response. It is one of the biggest issues facing, you know, our, our society. So a large amount of the calls for service handled by the Tacoma Park Police Department involve residents suffering from mental crisis. There's currently not enough county resources to handle the demand. I can tell you right now, there is not. Even with the increase in the crisis, the crisis teams in Montgomery County, it's still not enough. We're basically triaging, and that's not what we need to do. So the police department has proposed a pilot program to hire mental health counselors to address this mental health crisis here in Tacoma Park. The councils will work hand in hand with the police department, HCD, the County Crisis Center, and the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. To address mental health needs here in the city of Tacoma Park. This team will be able to respond to calls for service as they are occurring, but more importantly, act as caseworkers, similar to what our victim witness coordinator does. This proposal is currently being evaluated for ARPA funds. We feel that it can fall under the ARPA funds. We feel like we need to take action immediately here in the city of Tacoma Park. I can name about twenty individuals here that we have had more than three or four contacts with that have mental health issues. That are just not getting the resources they need. So we respond out. They're in mental crisis. We submit them for an emergency evaluation. Twenty-four, forty-eight hours, they're out and no one is assisting them. No one is holding their hand, getting them to a doctor's appointment. No one is evaluating what the problem is. No one is addressing the housing needs, all of those things. So we're really hopeful that these mental health counselors, as I said earlier, can act similar to what our victim witness coordinator does. And identify people in need and not only just be reactive to the calls for service, but also do follow-up visits. Also do casework to ensure that, that all of the people that are in need are getting all of the assistance they need. Like I say, I can't tell you how, if we're talking about an impact here in the city of Tacoma Park, I think this is one of our biggest needs. Next slide. One of the recommendations also was to increase biking for patrols in our business districts within Tacoma Park and purchase electric bikes. The city was already actively involved in what's called the Take Thirty Initiative. In all of our city business districts, the Tacoma Land Crossroads, the Flower Avenue Quarter and the Old Town Business District. Every officer who's assigned to the patrol section takes thirty, at least thirty minutes per shift. To patrol actively on foot and or bike in our Tacoma Park business districts. The city also purchased six new electric bikes this fall that we're hopeful we can utilize and, and getting around, you know, more quickly. A lot of times, there's a concern that if an officer is out on foot, they're too far away from their car for an active patrol. These bikes will allow us to get around some of these areas very quickly, so we can spend more time on the ground patrolling. We also are going to utilize these bikes on our Main Avenue corridor. It's just a better way, I think, for our officers to get out and meet and greet the public. A lot of times, you know, an officer sitting in a car is not really approachable. But if there's an officer on a bike, I think they're much more approachable. So we're really excited about this opportunity. You know, it's not only energy efficient, but it also is a way that I think they're to really engage, engage our community. You know, I, I think if you look at all of, all of the recommendations, you know, we're committed to doing whatever we can to make Tacoma Park have the best public safety model we can have. As the city manager said earlier, some of the things we can control here in this city of Tacoma Park. And some of the things involve the county government or schools, et cetera. But if we're really, really going to solve this public safety model, we must take a holistic approach to this. And it includes every department within the city government, not just police. And it includes housing, it includes education, and it also includes county government. I think that is it for my slides and I'll turn it over to Alex Cross, the Housing.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Alex Cross. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development. Just wanted to thank you all for having me this evening. And to echo what the chief just said about having a whole government response to our residents that are facing issues in the community. The, the items that I'll be discussing really quick are, were born out of a goal of moving some non-policing functions into other departments. Particularly creating a community assistance office, a community safety team and community program. Many of the services outlined in the recommendations are already provided by Montgomery County, as well as nonprofit organizations funded by federal, state and county dollars. That is not to say that we would not participate in those. We work closely with the county, as well as our nonprofit partners on housing issues. And when we have that insight into the community that are experiencing housing issues, we also gain insight into other social services that are needed by our residents. And that is when, you know, HCD ensures that we refer residents who are in need of social services to those organizations, particularly in Montgomery County, DHHS. To assist those residents in need. DHHS has. Some more staff capacity and expertise to handle these issues. Next slide. And another outgrowth of this was coordinating community engagement, transparency and training. HCD actively promotes community engagement throughout all facets of the work that HCD does. And like the chief said, we also work closely with the Tacoma Park Police Department, particularly with the victim witness coordinators. Oftentimes, victims of domestic violence also have housing issues, and we work closely with those residents who need those services. In terms of transparency, one of the goals was for the, for the city to publish code violations for Tacoma Park apartments. That information is available on the county DHCA website. There is a public-facing database. That includes all historical inspection complaints and annual inspections for Tacoma Park rental properties. And in terms of training, to make sure that this is a continuum from, you know, birth until becoming a senior citizen in Tacoma Park. We, you know, workforce development is one of the most critical activities that we can engage in as a city. And HCD does have community quality of life grants that we provide every year to establish a pipeline of workforce training. That assists our low to moderate income residents, you know, gain those skills that are necessary to avoid having, you know, be, having housing crises and be able to, to. You know, be able to enter the workforce and be accessible. Next slide. I'll hand it over to Greg, the Director of the Rec Department.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Clark, Recreation. And the Recreation Department has a couple strategies, recommendations from the committee that deal with the Recreation Department. And the first is to increase. Get an increased number of scholarships for weekend programs for kids in Tacoma Park. And the city does have a scholarship program that we offer. The scholarship program currently offers twenty, fifty and seventy percent reductions to residents. Once COVID started, we actually offered a hundred percent scholarship for residents that were specifically affected by COVID. And these scholarships are for residents only, and they're, you know, mainly given to residents that are disadvantaged or underserved populations. And we can work with residents a little closer about, you know, getting the word out about our scholarship program. But we currently have an extensive advertising campaign that we do for our scholarship program. Next slide, please. The second recommendation from the committee was to partner with the mentorship program. And also create opportunities for young residents to learn developmental skills from businesses. From in and around the city. And the department currently does a few things. Surrounding this arena. We actually have been partnering with a mentorship group, which everyone is familiar with, called Man Up, for several years. In addition, a few years ago, we implemented a summer youth employment program, which actually partners, pairs. City, young city residents, teens with businesses throughout the city to provide employment. Job readiness skills and things like that. And a lot of the participants of that particular program are first-time workers from the city. The, the actual SYP program was actually canceled in twenty-one due to COVID. And it will be reinstated this coming year, which we have funding for it. In addition, a few years ago, the council approved a youth success position for the city, which mainly. Their focus is outreach of youth and adults, teens and actually young adults, ages seventeen to twenty-four. And their task with skill-building opportunities, developmental opportunities for young people of that age group. So the Recreation Department is currently doing things to, in regards to these two recommendations. And with that, I believe. Not sure who to pass it on to.
That would be me, Greg. Thank you. Hi, I'm Donna Wright, Communications Manager. Thank you for having me. So I wanted to tell you a little about the Communications Department and some of the things we've been doing. I've been a Communications Manager since twenty eighteen, so I've been here for almost three years. When I was hired, I really truly believed that I had won the lottery. And in addition to that, I met a very talented, passionate and knowledgeable staff. Who really wanted some assistance in getting all of their projects and programs in the hands of the residents. And using as many touchpoints as possible. As you can see, we have about fifteen touchpoints that we are currently using in the city. And besides the website and also social media, we've created a digital e-newsletter called the Tacoma Insider. We've also teamed up with our city TV and radio. And our departments are able to go on and do some of the radio announcements themselves with the help of the city TV and staff. We also have bus shelters, which I don't think people are aware of. We have ten free shelters a month, and we use those for public service announcements. Also for stormwater arts and larger events such as our elections. Communication is really storytelling. So my job is to highlight and support every initiative in the city and support each program. And leverage as many of our communication touchpoints as possible as outreach to the community. The city does amazing work, and we really want to take residents along for the journey. My strategy in using these touchpoints is very simple. We create a larger story with three or four top benefits that will, that we can talk to the community. We create a timeline. We decide what kind of information or input we'll need from the community. And how many of these touchpoints we can roll across. And we also want to make sure that all of our information is open, open and readily available. Next slide, please. So where do we go from here? Well, with more staff, we can do more. I've been a one-person department for almost three years. But I am now over the moon to announce that Gerald Allen, our new communications specialist, has joined us last week. And he will help expand the capacity of the Communications Department. And I'm really looking forward to getting him trained, although Jamal said, City Manager Fox asked me to make sure I'm easy on him the first couple of weeks. Under leadership of City Manager Fox, we are really becoming more collaborative across departments. We are sharing information. We are teaming up together, reviewing lessons learned on new projects or programs that we're testing. We've also, in our engagement for redistricting, we've added live translation and ASL interpretation. City Clerk has added that and we. Sorry, we added that into the, our engagement, and it was really amazing. We learned a lot of lessons. We felt like people really were more inclusive and we were able to accommodate even more of the community for the first time in our Zoom meetings. Our public staff took, our city planning staff took that one step further. And with our lessons learned, they also used it in public engagement next week or last week. So we are now working to share all of that information with all of our other departments over the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. So departments are sharing workshops, seminars and various training sessions on how to be diverse, equitable and inclusive. It's not intuitive, and it requires a framework with expert guidance and direction. Training will help us and enable us to continue to be inclusive in all of our touchpoints. And to get there, we have to choose it, work at it, and we have to push each other to build it. Next slide, please. Rebranding. This is really a dream come true for me. City Manager Fox recognizes the importance and the demands of engagement that a good interactive website will provide for the community. Since joining the city, I've been asking to have a new website as the existing website is at least six years old. That website is old and outdated. The website is very restrictive and frustrates our staff and our efforts to share information, navigation, content tables, reporting, imagery and has no community engagement at all. Giving the city a facelift and getting the community involved in this new rebranding that will include a new logo. The logo will be engaging and inclusive and will have, take our communications to a new level. As part of the rebranding, City TV and Communications are even creating a promo video about the city. We're hoping to showcase our unique small businesses that include a very diverse restaurant.
Ms. Wright, you muted yourself accidentally.
Actually, it's doing it by itself. My hands are just sitting. It's done that all day. People are texting me, telling me that I'm not muted. I'm like, I'm not touching anything. So as part of the rebranding, the city and communications teams are creating a promo video about the city. We're hoping to showcase our unique small businesses and it will include our very diverse restaurants plus two farmers markets. We will highlight the architectures of the city, spotlight our six wards showcasing life experience and the passion that the city has for advocacy. So we are continuing to work hard in the Communications Department and across all of our departments. And we're hoping with our new rebranding that it will give us new life into the Communications Department and engaging tools with the community. Thanks. Thank you.
Next slide, please. I want to thank my team for sharing their perspectives in their respective departments this evening. One of the recommendations was, as we look forward, increasing the transparency and advanced notice regarding the city budgeting process. As the last budget was created with the previous city manager and council, we were planning for a new day this fiscal year in preparation of a post-COVID climate and workplace. And staff is focused on ways where we can increase our transparency. We already have outlined processes where the preliminary budget document is released 30 days in advance to council in advance of the reconciliation, the work session. The city manager provides a public presentation soon after the preliminary budget document is released that highlights budget changes by department. The Finance Department had added new budget highlights and changes in columns to the fiscal year 22 budget book. And, but we're also evaluating the possibility of purchasing a budget tool that will allow council and residents to explore budget data in more detail on an annual basis. Next slide. Another recommendation as relates to overall the city is reviewing city departments, our structure, potentially moving functions from one department to another. Well, as we're looking to become a more resilient Tacoma Park, as I shared at the top of the hour, post-COVID, we'll be evaluating citywide operations and using data to make informed decisions. Those decisions will come from two of the three requests for proposals, RFPs, that we already have on the street. One is the compensation study and pay equity assessment, which is going to be a valuable tool to gain a better understanding of factors affecting compensation in the organization. And the analysis will take in consideration of similarly situated work groups throughout the organization. The organization workforce needs and risk assessment will provide analysis of the organization's processes, current structure and the work culture. That analysis will include recommendations and actions that are best practices to support achievement of the organization's goals and priorities. And the last RFP, which isn't on the street yet, but we also would like to complete a five-year financial forecast. This planning document will assist the organization with fiscal management and accountability by showing historical and projected revenues, cost, expenses and overall cash flow issues in general. That document will be the evaluation of long-term outcomes when making current financial decisions regarding new programs or decisions about funding existing programs that council will be able to use when we go through the budgeting process. Next slide. Now, as we conclude the staff presentation, the next step for staff, we're going to continue to review the recommendations, some items that we've shared tonight, other items that need more evaluation in collaboration with council. The Chief's Advisory Board is reviewing the recommendations made by the task force and will provide input on how best to implement those recommendations. Many of the recommendations will have a staffing or budget implication and that will need to be brought forward to council. With that, Madam Mayor and Council, staff stands ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you. I don't know if we want to take down the shared screen so it's easier to see everyone. Great. Well, thank you all for the presentations this evening. Ask my colleagues to get, Councilmember Siemens already has his hand up. I guess I will start with you, Councilmember Siemens.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And thank you for putting my picture up here on the website. Everyone can see how serious I am about this subject. I'd like to start out first and just comment on Chief DeVal's time here with the city. I really appreciate the fact that Chief DeVal has addressed the major task that we presented to him when he first joined the city and that was to change the culture of the Tacoma Park Police Department. And I thank you for the great strides that you've made in that direction. And I think it's been helpful with the Public Safety Task Force to come in at the time that it has and start looking at what other recommendations might be helpful in continuing that process of developing a new culture here in the city for public safety. And then I'd like to thank our city manager, Mr. Fox, for taking leadership role in this process and looking at it not just as a policing issue, but as you said, a citywide issue that crosses all departments. And I think that, you know, we heard a lot of great plans this evening. And so without spending a whole lot of time, because this is such an important project or initiative, I would just like to say that I didn't hear anything tonight that was presented that I would disagree with. I I see a lot of things that, that, you know, give you, give me great hope for, for addressing some of the problems that that we've seen in the city and, you know, for example, the mental health, being able to address that in a way that we have not had the resources to do or the, we haven't taken the initiative to address them in the way that they should be. And it's, it's nice that we're thinking about that, talking about it and trying to figure out how we can do something like that. But rather than spend a whole lot of time on the individual things, I would just like to say that I think for me, what would be most helpful on the council is if we had a periodic report card on how things are moving in the various things that we heard about tonight, not just within the police department, but again, across the city departments. And the things that we already do, the things that are planned to be done and, and on some recommendations on other things that we should be doing or could be doing and with some kind of an easy, easy format that would allow us to kind of measure that against the recommendations of the Public Safety Task Force. And I'd just say, I would like to see something like that on a quarterly basis so that we, we on the council can keep our finger on this and keep track of what's going on and be able to offer our two cents when, when we feel it's important. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Searcy now.
Great. Thank you. So thank you all so much. This is a really great overview. And I kind of like to start where City Manager Fox began. You know, this is just an initial conversation and there will be plenty of conversations going forward. I really like Councilmember Siemens' idea of a report card, but I would argue that there are some aspects of the recommendations that we weren't able to dive deep into tonight that would require a more in-depth conversation with the council. So for example, there were recommendations around K-9 units. There were recommendations around body worn cameras. There were recommendations around other aspects of not only policing policy, but aspects that may relate to policies in other departments that would warrant us having a more comprehensive conversation as a council so that we can make the decisions that we need to make in terms of how to move some of these issues forward. So I would like to ask the mayor if we could work together to identify specific work sessions where we can cherry pick some of these recommendations that would require more in-depth conversation so that we, as a council, can come together and make some decisions around some of these really pivotal issues that definitely require council consultation. Because I think, again, you know, in an environment where you're trying to tackle 51 recommendations in 20 minutes, you know, it's, that's hard, right? And I appreciate all of the work that the staff have done, but I do think that there is a number of things that the council itself needs to make a decision regarding. So one of the things that came to mind for me is how do we, and I understand that we have a process for looking at ARPA issues or ARPA projects, but the mental health pilot, how much money are we talking about? This is clearly an issue. Why are we waiting?
Well, currently, there's, there's, there's numbers that we're looking into where we're taking it as the part of our process with the senior leadership team to fully vet what a process would look like. So right now, what's on the table is a potential two-year pilot, but we need to dive deeper in what that will look like, what we would need to get it off the ground in conjunction with all the other items, which are between 50 or 70 items that we have as part of our process that we will be bringing back forth to council.
How many of those other items do we have that relate to mental health crisis units?
As far as mental health crisis unit, that may be the only item specifically on the test, on the list that we have. I think that's the only one.
Okay. Given the importance of this issue, given that this is something we've heard from the community that we know for a fact is that we desperately need, I would like to recommend, and I hope that my colleagues would join me, that we elevate this pilot project as something that we start talking about. Because if we don't have anything else that could fit the bill, then I would prefer for us to talk about this. I feel comfortable with us pulling this one out of the process so that we can go ahead and start making decisions around how to move forward. What I would hate for us to do, especially as we're embarking on the holidays, which is also a really challenging time for people, that we don't do the due diligence we need to do to at least put a foot forward to kind of address this issue in a more timely way. So if it were possible for us to get some information sooner rather than later in terms of cost and what would need to happen in order to move this forward, I don't want us to necessarily get bogged down in the budgeting process in January where we're going to get a bunch of calls during the holidays because that's usually a really hard time for people. So whatever we can do to start moving this forward now, I would, I would be open to that. And again, I hope my colleagues will join me. There's a, another question that came up for me in terms of the housing, the housing component. And I think that there were a number of aspects of the recommendations that I wondered how they overlapped with what we, what we have planned in terms of implementation of the Housing Economic Strategic Plan. So I know that we highlighted during the presentation aspects of inspection results that are posted on the county website. But I also wonder to what extent are things related to our aging housing stock and the quality of the housing in the city that was supposed to be a part of that Housing Economic Strategic Plan and the work that we're doing there and how those pieces fit together. So I think it might be helpful, again, understanding where we are because of COVID and kind of piggybacking and still in Councilmember Siemens' thunder, we might need an update on what's going on with the Housing Economic Strategic Plan and where we are with that. Because there, as I see it, is quite a bit of overlap as it relates to workforce, how workforce efforts as it relates to housing quality that kind of aligns tangentially with the recommendations that the Public Safety Task Force put forward. And so it would be helpful to know where we are with that as well. So that's something that I would like to make sure that we put on the, on the, on the agenda as well. And I'll pause if folks have any questions. I got a line, Julie. I'm sorry, y'all. So another big thing in terms of rec programs, and I know that Greg mentioned some of the scholarships and summer employment programs that we have. My question for these programs is about capacity and whether or not, I know there's a number of recommendations that the Public Safety Task Force made around education as it relates to aspects of things like, gosh, I'm blanking on the name of it. Chief, you know what the name of some of those trainers are for children and things like that. And I know that we, that would require coordination with MCPS, but is there a way for us to incorporate aspects of those types of training initiatives through our rec programs? In addition to what is some of the capacity issues that we may have with scholarships and employment? Do we need more, basically? Do we need more programming that we can do as a city on our own, even if MC, you know, even if public schools doesn't want to necessarily do trainings around trying to teach children how to interact with the police and, you know, those kinds of things? Are there things that we can do within the city through our rec department that we may want to consider? In addition to, do we have enough resources for the number of scholarships and summer employment programs? So those are some of the things that came to mind for me. Again, this is another place where there are other recommendations that related to education and MCPS that it, that would require coordination that the council would need to do, but could also relate to what we're doing in the rec department as well. So I think that that's another area that we'll need to kind of explore more because again, it was 51 recommendations. And again, I don't anticipate folks being able to go through all 51. I've been living through all 51. So they come to mind for me where those connections may be. But I want to make sure that we're able to kind of do a bit of a deeper dive. We got an overview today, but I think that there's going to be a need to do a bit of a deeper dive into some of these aspects more specifically. And then lastly, the, well, not lastly, next to last, I'm sorry. The communications piece. So Donna, I appreciate your points about the website and communications overall. A couple of things that did come out of the Public Safety Task Force was about, you know, our internal procedures as a city for clearing and vetting external communications and how that works, you know, and how that coordination happens between our police department announcements versus things that come through Donna. So I think that, you know, to the point about, you know, making the improvements to the website, I think that's yes, yes. the website, I think that's, yes, yes, definitely needs to happen, but also translation, making sure that information is available to people with visual or hearing impairments, in addition to how are we internally vetting and clearing and making sure that we're running the necessary sensitivity checks on communications that are cultural sensitivity checks on communications that come out from both the police department as well as the city, the city at large. So, you know, again, that's that next piece that we would need to kind of make sure that we're doing a deeper dive in and whether or not that's something that's done through a report card or if it's incorporated into some of the other communications presentations that we may have. That's that next step from what we are doing now and the intent behind the recommendations that the Public Safety Task Force made. So, how do we move to that next level is, is what I'm trying to get at. And then, lastly, is the, you know, the organizational needs assessment. And I guess, City Manager Fox, one of the things that I'm trying to make sure that I understand is part of, you know, that process is that, you know, to what extent is there going to be some of, some of the emphasis on, you know, the police department's individual roles and responsibilities in terms of like dispatch and, you know, neighborhood services and things like that? Because those are some of the things that were brought up through the Public Safety Task Force, and I don't know to what extent an overarching organizational assessment may get at that level of nuance. Is the plan to go that deep or is the plan to just look more at functions as, as, at a higher level?
So, the question for me, you're posing?
Yes. All right. That's a question. I'm trying to go fast. I told you I got two pages.
So, the organizational assessment is gonna give that high level, but it will get into departments, they will provide a best practice and look at span of control, look at departments, department functions, where things are. So, it, it will get into the, the nuance of the organization.
Okay. So, I think that's going to be another big thing that'll need to get pulled out of these particular recs in terms of what are the issues that are functional and then what are the issues in terms of staffing level and capacity? Because there, there was a combination of both. Again, these, it's 51 recommendations and they were all kind of woven in together and you kind of got to break them up a little bit to see where some of these areas of how many dispatchers do we have, where are they focused versus neighborhood services, what do they actually cover, where should those functions be housed? It, I saw it as a little bit more complex in terms of the recommendations that were made, and so that'll be something that'll be important to keep in mind as we're working on that, this organizational assessment. And I said that was the last one, but it's not. The chief advisory board, so there was the very first recommendation that the Public Safety Task Force made was about establishing a, 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 a group, a community, a committee or a, a group to kind of continue their work. And one of the things that was not clear from the presentation is whether or not staff are proposing that the chief's advisory board will fill that recommendation or if that is another item that needs to be added to the list for the council to talk about, how do we want to address that recommendation in terms of what a new, you know, do we need another committee that is focused on, you know, the recommendations that came out of this or coming up with others? How does that relate to the chief's advisory board? I, I just want to make sure that I'm, that we're not kind of putting the cart before the horse by having the chief's advisory board basically oversee the implementation and status of the recommendations from the, from the task force when the task force actually made a recommendation around creating a committee. Does that make sense?
I, I can address that one. That, that was just put in there for an understanding of, 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 once again, it's not just the police department, it's not just the rec department, it's not just housing. We also have the chief's advisory board reviewing the recommendations and discussing, you know, what they think we should move forward with, what the bucket should be and so on and so forth. I do not think the chief's advisory board is a great group, and that for people that think that the chief's advisory board works for me, they don't. They are residents of this city that advise me on police issues. We have heated conversations, we have disagreements amongst the group, but it is very, very helpful for me. And that group has brought forward a lot of really good ideas that the police department has implemented, alternative street mediation was one of them. So, I, I think it's great that the chief's advisory board is reviewing the recommendations, but, but that was not meant as a placeholder to say that the chief's advisory board should now take over that role that the task force recommended. I think that there should be a discussion at the council level about how, you know, we best should move forward evaluating and tracking these recommendations. I really think from, from a department head perspective, it would be extremely helpful if you all could, number one, put all these kind of in buckets and then come us, have us brief you on these issues. You brought up K-9, you brought up LPRs. For the council to make educated decisions, they need to hear from subject matter experts and they need to hear from us on those issues. So, what would be very helpful is for the council to define buckets and then say, we want to hear from the city about LPR, so we want to hear from the city about K-9, and then we can present and then you can give direction. But just circling back, I, I do not see the chief's advisory board, and that was not meant in that slide to, to imply that they were going to take over that role that was recommended by the task force. It was merely advising the council that we have other eyes on the task force's recommendations. So, I think that's part of what you need to add to a discussion item is how do we track these recommendations as we move forward.
Perfect. Thank you. And I've bucketed some of this stuff. I'll, I'll work with the mayor to see, you know, I don't want to bore everyone with 50,000 work sessions on this stuff, but we may need a few. So, I'll work with the mayor to kind of organize that and get our sessions lined up. But again, I, I just want to thank everyone for, for all of your hard work on this. I know that it's a lot to digest and chief, especially for you in, in the changing environment, it seems like every time you have a handle on what's happening at the state level, the county does something new. So, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we're all, we're taking a all-city approach to addressing the recommendations and, you know, again, this is just the first step and there'll be many more to take. So, thank you all so much.
Great. I'm gonna jump the line a little bit, because I want to follow up on the conversation that was just taking place and put forward a, a kind of a recommendation on next steps, even though I know we still have other questions. But I think my colleagues, Councilmember Siemens and Cersei, put some things on the table and Chief DeValle just talked about it as well. And as we, going through the rest of the questions tonight, I, I'd like to propose that a good next step might be for the working group that worked closely with the task force, Councilwoman Cersei, Siemens, myself, take the time over our, our winter break to work on taking this feedback from the staff, putting these items sort of in the buckets and putting together a plan for moving forward on them. And so, we can look at, and I wrote down the, kind of the same things, LPRs, body worn camera, cameras, you know, K-9 and other things that we'll need to establish work sessions on and dig in deeper on that. So, and I want to put all this in a chart. I'm like desperate for a chart on this, because I need to sort of map out, like, you know, where, where, where are we now? Where do we see progress on this in the next year? Where do we need some council decisions? I think, you know, for, for many of these, that's something we need to kind of map out and do, and the information you provided tonight, I think would really help Councilmember Siemens, Cersei and myself work on that and with more staff input if my colleagues were up for that. But I, I kind of feel like really digging into this and then creating that chart will be helpful for us in scheduling further work sessions. While I, I do have the floor, I will say I am in complete agreement with Councilwoman Cersei on the mental health issues, and I want to move forward on a pilot ASAP. I, I, I don't know what we need to do. I completely understand from our city manager about the process with ARPA funds, the council did also put aside $50,000 last year specifically because we knew there were going to be items from the task force report that we wanted to move on. I think some of us had an inkling there were going to be in the area of mental health. We have been talking about this, not just since July, not just since June of 2020, but when the hospital left us and closed their behavioral health unit. This has been an ongoing conversation in the city, and while I'm glad we have ARPA funds to augment this, I would really like the city manager to come back to us before we go on break to tell us, what do we need to do to help you all actually move forward with this so that it's not something that we have to come back to on June 12th, but that the work can actually progress in this area? Because if we wait till June 12th, or, sorry, January 12th or time in January, we already know from colleagues around the region that mental health professionals are hard to find. There is a dearth of them. We need to start moving on this and exploring like what we can do in the city to address this right away. And so, I just want to say I, I also endorse Councilwoman Cersei's request for movement on that. I did have some questions for Director Cross on the housing, some things to just consider. And I know in terms of the county doing many of the items that the task force identified, but also thinking about, they also suggested increasing of staff, and I think one question I have that the staff can consider and come back with a response is not to duplicate the efforts that are happening at the county level, because I don't think we can do that or do that well in the city, but I do think we need more liaisons or connecting to be able to connect people to those services. And that takes a lot of handholding lots of times. It is not, we, we learned that a number of years ago when the city did have a part-time staff person working with seniors and people with disabilities that, you know, it was, it was more than a full-time position even to help connect people to the services that were at the county level. Because many times, and you know the Director Cross better than I do, that every situation is so unique and can take a lot of time with folks. So, I, I just ask, because I think what I was taking away from, from what you said, I'm not sure if that's what you meant, but just sort of more thought to what, as we're moving forward, what we can do in the city to connect people to those resources, not necessarily duplicating them, but, you know, making people more aware of them, helping them get to those resources, I think would be really helpful and thinking through that a bit more. I don't know, there's a lot to go through, so I know I'm going to pause there and turn it over to Councilwoman Caustic, but I just wanted to pull on those threads while they were fresh in everyone's minds.
Thank you. First of all, just want to give a, a big thank you again to the task force members and to all of the staff who presented tonight and who worked on this. Really, it's really important that we're moving forward on this, and I'm really happy to get the updates today. I think many of the thoughts I have been having are, are very much in line with what I've heard from my colleagues tonight in terms of, first of all, just trying to wrap my head around all of the different elements and how we move forward from what we have right now to tangible actions that are happening before us. And wanting, I, I also want to see us move forward on many of the items that were in the task force recommendations that we don't have a lot of information on tonight that, you know, would be useful to dig in a little deeper on. And those are things a number of my colleagues have mentioned, the K-9 unit, neighborhood services, the LPRs, the body worn cameras. So, I, I support the idea of this, the subgroup digging in and kind of figuring out how we can move forward in a logical way and a quick way. I do think, just, I, I think all of the information I've heard tonight, you know, sounds good and I'm glad to see us moving forward. I'd just like to see a little bit more, I think, a sense of urgency and fast movement. And I know it's hard to move quickly and, and everybody's moving as quickly as they can, but just don't want to make, I want to make sure the council and anything that we need to do to make sure actions are in place and can happen, is happening. And so, I, I also, I also support the faster movement on the mental health next steps that my colleagues have proposed and not waiting for the ARPA, the larger discussion on ARPA. I think that's something we have all emphasized and the importance of, and it's something I hear from residents very, very frequently as a concern. The other thing I want to flag with regard to the, the mental health pilot is that I think that may need in order to be effective on kind of a larger scale, that may need to go hand in hand with some improvements and changes to how residents contact the city, because I hear very frequently from people who want to contact the, someone to assist with a mental health situation but are not comfortable contacting the police department. And so, I think we need to sort of resolve that as part of this so that people can get easily connected with the mental health professionals to get the help they need as well.
And that's part of the proposal is, is giving them access to direct call. So, if they have a situation similar to what some council members have brought to my attention, that they want help for an individual, it's not a violent individual, but they just want someone to come out and resolve it, that's part of what, what is going to be in the pilot is the availability to contact them directly. So, I, I think it was you or another council member brought to my attention, an issue with somebody that was in distress, they were not violent, but they just wanted to get them some resources. There would be a contact number where they could contact someone directly to come out. No police would be involved, it would just be them. So, that's part of what, that's part of what we're putting forward as we put forward the pilot.
That's great. Excellent. I think that's a really important component. And, yeah, so I, I, I think we'll have further conversations on a lot of the elements specific to, to policing. I also wanted to just note a couple of items with regard to rec and communications. For the rec department, I wondered if we could get some information about the percentage of participants who are receiving scholarships? I think you might have provided this in the past, but just curious about what the percentage is and if there are wait lists either for scholarship participants and/or other participants and what those wait lists look, look like, just so that we make sure we kind of have a picture of how many people we're serving and what the need is and the, the demand for service is in our rec programs, both for classes but also for the childcare programs more particularly. And then, with regard to communications, I also just want to build on Councilmember Cersei's note about connecting the police communications and the city at large communications and making sure that that is seamless and connected and, and that we kind of create those connections so we all kind of know what's, what's happening and, and there's kind of a consistency of messaging and, and tone in those. But thank you all, and looking forward to moving forward on, looking forward to moving forward, it's a lot of forwards, on all of this, and I appreciate all your work on it. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman DeValle?
Yes, thank you. I have a lot of comments, maybe not two and a half pages worth, but pretty close. And so, I'll just try to highlight for tonight. I also had been thinking about next steps more than I had been thinking about questions about this, this specific presentation tonight. And I support the mayor's proposal to reactivate the subgroup and to, I think there's a good start on the buckets already tonight. I love the whole city approach. I think we should keep thinking that way, because it's about public safety, it's not, it's not just about our police department, as wonderful as they might be. So, I'm also interested in hearing more before the break about how we might implement a, what the next steps might be on implementing a mental health pilot, whether there is any help whatsoever from the county, I gather, that could be tapped into, I gather, not, and what the, what the immediate goals might be. I'm open to moving, moving ahead on, using some ARPA funding, provided that we hear, as I think we will, that the, that a mental health crisis pilot program would fit the ARPA criteria for the most vulnerable among us. I mean, even, we, we've had people come to council and ask for help in this area, but we had somebody tonight. So, I think it's, I think it's a, it's viable, but I think we need to make that case to ourselves. Um, so I think it's I think it's a it's viable, but I think we need to make that case um to ourselves and to the public before we jump ahead. Um, again, I think it'll work, but I I think we need we can't skip that step. Um. Uh, I also had uh questions for housing for HCD and for rec about. Um, what more do you need? Um, how are the things that you're doing working now? Um, I'm so glad we're already doing them and what and what 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 more potential is there? Um. I want to double back on how we. For lack of a better word, institutionalized some of the things we're already doing. So just to go um. To the beginning of the presentation, the talk of the the information that Chief DeVal gave us about the. Increase in data that's been provided on traffic counts and on uh on arrests. So how do we? Do we do that every six months? Do we do that once a year? How how do we communicate that to the public? Those are the kinds of things in terms of next steps I'd like to see fleshed out. Um, and. Last, but certainly not. Two, well, two last thoughts. Um, one of the buckets really has to be what are the programs? That you all as um as our as the city staff recommend that we need more review on. If if you said it, I think I missed it. You talked a lot about what you're all all are already doing and what you might be able to do more of or do differently. Um, but but there were some things in the report that that clearly need council level attention. And to just make sure we we put that in one of the it put put that out there. Uh, that might be a question that I have for tonight is what are the couple of things um in that category? And my last. Uh, point is about the possible role of a citizen advisory board um independent of. Um. Of the police and police and police advisory board. Um, that strikes me as an example of something that we need more review and discussion on. Um, so setting aside that recommendation, what are some of the other things that you know now? Need more review and discussion from council? Besides mental health. Program and. Citizen Advisory Board. Are they all those police-related things like LAOBR and and canines and so forth? Or are there other more cross-cutting? Areas that you think we need to look at as a council?
As I said earlier, I think it would be helpful to get some direction from you all as you review the report to us. Um, what you see as a priority and what buckets you you see and how they intersect. And then we can and we can provide some background on like canine, whether it be LPRs, but I'm just talking law enforcement things now. Whether it be recreation programs, that that would assist us. So I so I think. A lot of the things intersect, but but at this point, it like say, it would really help for us to get the buckets and then be able to provide you with. Um, background or those issues. So then you can take a more educated. You of, okay, does it really belong in this bucket or does it belong in this one? Or do we not want to have LPRs? And so that, at least from my perspective, that would be an easier step um at this point, because we're kind of. And we provide the information and it's just kind of some direction or or our idea of. Of you all, what exactly you want to see from us.
Okay, um, I guess I was I was looking at it as there are fifty recommendations and. And which ones, which five do we need to delve into? But I see I see you're. You're flipping it around. Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you. Thank you for all of this effort. Um, I'm really looking forward to the next steps here.
I thought you were gonna go longer when you started.
I'm trying. I know I'm trying to.
All right, don't mind Gary. You're good. I just thought, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Ma- Mayor, and thanks to all the staff for the. Presentations. I appreciate it. There's a lot of talk about buckets, and I think that makes sense because these things do. Belong in different categories and um in in thinking about. How we might proceed because I I think. What I want to avoid is. Us deciding, well, we have to figure out all fifty-one of these before we make any progress. And I agree with the mayor. Let's get started on a. A pilot if we can as soon as possible, but in in looking over the list again uh this afternoon, just to. Remind myself what was on there again. I did. See, I I think basically five categories. There's some central issues and and to me that's. You know, are we going to have a community assistance office and community safety team? Uh, can we use ARPA funds for that? Are we going to train dispatchers to somehow be able to refer mental health? That that whole set of issues. And I think also what is really central is the non-policing. Social and community programs that need more investment and and where we're going to get the funds from. Without resolving those kinds of things, we'll never really get to where we want to go, but we're also those are hard to address. Immediately, although we can do we can do a pilot program. So there's these central issues. And then there are issues that to me look like yes, it's other people. They might look like no, everything requires work. You can't just sort of snap your fingers and have them happen, but. There's smaller, more discreet issues. Um. You know, some of them, the staff are are doing, making the website better. Maybe we just review that. Um, but another might be including police officers, maybe other staff, police officers and maybe other staff. And something like the home stretch program, and I support that. I think we should try to do that. That's a discrete issue that doesn't necessarily get caught up in these larger questions about is there. Uh, an alternative response kind of mechanism to have. So we have the central issue. We have the. The yes or no's for smaller issues. Then we have the ones where we need more information. Maybe some of my colleagues. Or the staff already know the answers. I don't feel like I know the answer necessarily on what we should do on. Body cameras or how it would work to have a public safety order. I'm just picking picking a few of them. Um. Is the data that we're publicizing, is that sufficient or or do we need to do more? I don't know the answers to that. Um. There are some that I'm not even. Really sure what what they mean, but then there are some. There's a chunk, for example, that relates to Montgomery County schools, and maybe we can do a letter or resolution that would cover all of them. So what I'd like to see us do and maybe reconstituting the. The working group is a way to kind of prioritize that. Let's figure out which are the ones. That are relatively quick and maybe low cost, but we have to debate whether we want them. Which are the big ones that we really want to delve into and spend some time on? Which ones can we do with the fifty thousand dollars versus the ARPA funds, et cetera? That's a set of prioritizing that. I think each of us might answer differently, and so that's why I think if I understood the mayor correctly, having. Having the 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 three council members try to help us do that, and I can certainly. Give my list, but I'm not going to read that off now, but I I sort of see most of them falling into these five buckets. And then the other way to you could bucket it is just the way the. Um, the way the task force itself bucketed, so so then community-led. Um, engagement oversight, then they had new departments or functions, then they had communications, they had police enforcement. And education and training plus a few others. So they had five. The things seem to get broken up depending on how you do it in into five. Chunks. And so, yeah, I would like to see us do that pilot program, but then I'd also like to see us. Divided up, maybe not in the way I've said, but that's one logical way and and then get started. But to me, it's not quarterly. It's maybe monthly. Saying, okay, let's get started on the big ones. Let them continue rolling out. Then the next month, take some of the smaller bite-sized ones and and work on those. Uh, particularly ones that don't cost money so that we've got long-term and short-term. Kind of being worked on at the same time, but to me with some emergency and not. Just letting it drift. And I think without that small group helping us prioritize, we probably won't be able to avoid the drift. So that's why I think that's necessary. That's all. That's really process rather than policy-oriented, but I think that's kind of where we are. We need to we need to understand that stuff. So I hope that makes some sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Uh, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, I just would like to first thank Mr. Fox and and senior staff for the report. I appreciate it. Uh, I I have to say I'd like to associate myself with uh Councilmember Kovar's comments. I think that is a prudent way to go forward. Uh, I think breaking this up into buckets makes sense. I just have a couple of questions. Um. The chief, you you mentioned that violent crime is up. Do you have any idea or any? Uh, recommendations? Because that seems like it's a it's a national trend. Why we're seeing this uptick in violent crime?
Actually, actually, crime in in the city has gone down, violent crime in. Um, less less violent crime since two thousand and fifteen. We don't have uh twenty uh twenty-one numbers. Um, what we're gonna see is is an increase in violent crime, probably in the city of Tacoma Park, but we have not seen the overall numbers. Um, you know, a lot of that you'll see in in large cities, uh but you're not seeing that same correlation here. Like I said, we don't have the twenty twenty-one numbers. Um, but the twenty twenty numbers did not for the national narrative that we were that we're seeing for violent crime increasing. We did not see that in the city of Tacoma Park. Uh, what I said is violent crime is actually reduced from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. Um, what and those are the numbers that we currently have available. What has been reduced is our arrest for minor crimes. What is increased is our arrest for serious crimes.
Okay, serious crimes.
Arrest for serious crimes, not the actual serious crime. So there's a difference between who we're arresting and the crimes that are occurring, if that makes any sense.
And so how, and I apologize for using the word violent, I you know, uh, let me retract that. Uh. It so how is it that we're getting more of these serious crimes? Is that better investigative police work? How do we increase that bucket?
Uh, let me just say that the number of serious crimes occurring did not increase over that time period. What increased is our arrest for those serious crimes. So we are now focusing on. Arrests for burglaries, carjackings, robberies, et cetera. And not focusing our resources on minor marijuana possession when it was illegal. Or or loitering or minor offenses that don't really have an effect on the quality of life here in the city of Tacoma Park. So that's what I'm saying. So so just because we've made more arrests for serious crimes does not mean more serious crimes are occurring. We are just focusing our resources and in in our in our detectives and our investigative work. And our SAT team, which is our special retirement team, and using data as a force multiplier to say, okay, we now have received. Five thefts on Elm Avenue over the last week. We now are going to put our SAT team out in that area to catch that person. For the theft from autos. That's the calculated response that we now have as opposed to just random. Let's just go out here and drive around and see if we find something. So um, I don't know what the twenty twenty-one number is going to look like. We'll have the twenty twenty-one numbers in 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 January. But um, what you're seeing is a refocus of our resources on addressing. Crimes and traffic offenses that affect the quality of life here in the city of Tacoma Park. Um, during previous administrations, there was an emphasis on drug enforcement and pushing people off of street corners for no particular reason, maybe the mojering citations and so on and so forth. Um, those might be arrest numbers, but they had no real impact, and they really strained the relationship between the police department. And a lot of our residents. Um, so I don't know if that I explained that properly, but but um, you know, I I will be extremely, I I will be honest. Violent crime is increasing regionally, and it is increasing across the country in numbers that we have never seen. We fortunately, we've had violent incidents here in Tacoma Park, but we are not seeing them as frequently. As are seen in, say, Prince George's County, who has over one hundred homicides already this year. Um, there's not a day goes by that I don't get an alert for a homicide that occurred in Prince George's County. Um, we want people to know that Tacoma Park is not an easy target. Coming to commit a crime in Tacoma Park, we're gonna have, we're gonna be very proactive in investigating. Um, we're gonna be very, very proactive in having officers in problem areas. Uh, we're gonna use intelligence as force multipliers to make sure that we are doing everything we can. So I I don't know if that explains the difference between. Uh, you know, serious arrest, serious crime arrest and serious crime.
Yeah, uh, thank you for taking the time to walk me through that. So and I I I want to uh thank you and your 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 staff for. The arrest that occurred earlier today on Flower Avenue. Uh, you know, there there wasn't any. Incident, uh, you know, any major incident that that situation resolved. Uh, so I I I do appreciate, you know, the work that you guys are doing. Um. So how do we get? I know you you're still doing the 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 uh coffee with a cop uh around the city, but how do we? Uh, increase more embedding of the. Police with young people, uh, you know, like we used to do like the homework club. Uh, how do we? You know, possibly find uh fund some of these programs, maybe with ARPA because it's, you know, uh, community engagement, but. Uh, how do we bridge that relationship that I just seems like it's. We're close, but it's not there with all aspects of the community, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I I mean, I think if that's done one contact at a time, I will be completely candid that COVID really put a damper on our community outreach activities. Um, our homework club was not done because it was not school. Our explorers program could not be conducted because we just could not do it with COVID. Uh, we're obviously trying to bring back those programs. Um, they are cornerstone to, you know, engaging young folks at that ground level, which I think is extremely important. But we are actively involved in all of these events. We were actively involved in Monster Bash in the weekend. We were gonna have a trunk and treat event that we had to cancel because of the storms last week, but we incorporated it into the Monster Bash program. Um, we 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 meet on a monthly basis with all of our area principals. Um, we have, you know, on a regular basis, we had a really long discussion at our last principal meeting. About um SROs and about how do we as police officers still have that relationship and engagement with our youth? Here in schools in the city of Tacoma Park and balance that, you know, officer in schools. So it was a really interesting conversation, and all the principals in all of our schools really said, you know, we like what you all are doing. Uh, in that particular instance, we were talking about the youth that traditionally every year come down on Grand Avenue and and cause disturbances. So, you know, we're working with the school system, we're working with Tacoma Park Little School to come, you know, come up and and for me and my community service officer, Lieutenant Williams. To talk directly to students and say, look, this is what the behavior expectation is. A lot of our kids. Two years ago were in elementary school. Now they're put into a middle school environment. And they don't know what the expectations are for behavior. So we're working with schools to say, okay, this is what the expected behavior is if you're walking. To and from school. We expect you not to walk through somebody else's yard, to throw trash in their yard, not going to do and run away. That seems real simple, but so many of our kids just. COVID has really impacted, and it goes back to mental health once again. COVID has really impacted our kids, their socialization skills, their mental health. Uh, capabilities, all of these things. That's part of what the pilot program also expresses is mental health with our kids. So I see it more and more now that the kid's in distress. So I think that going back to how we engage. Engage one contact at a time. It's the kid that walks by my window and I wave at them, invite them inside, you know, to talk to me. It's things like that that are important. What I am really pleased about is, like I said earlier, we've hired over fifty percent of our officers since two thousand and eighteen. And all of these officers are here because they want to engage. They knew what the expectations were when they came here to the city of Tacoma Park. Obviously, we are full-service police department. We have to handle policing situations as we did today professionally. Um, we handled a person with respect. The person was taken into custody without incident. They're police officers, and they have to do police work, but part of that also is building that partnership with our community and especially our youth. So I think when we talk about taking a holistic approach and what and and what the the task force is trying to do is the programs that Greg does. The program that this the city does, we as a police department need to become more involved in those. Um, so they can see us as, okay, the first time you see a police officer is not in a bad situation. That's the last thing you want. The first time you have interaction with a police officer, you want it to be a positive interaction, not a negative interaction, because if that's ingrained in your mind. Um, so I I think that that we're working actively. We're gonna have our breakfast with Santa. We're trying to bring back all these programs. Uh, you know, we're really pleased to have a fantastic community service officer and Cindy Williams, though we do not owe her. She is really, really engaged. Uh, she is fantastic. She works really, really well, not only with. Um, other departments within the city, but also with with our businesses and and young folks, and and she can really relate. So I'm really excited about that. Um, she's putting together, you know, some programs I think really are going to be engaging. Uh, she has some great ideas. So so. I think that that that, you know, the programs that we stopped because of COVID, we're gonna bring back and we're also looking. Uh, she has some great ideas. So so I think that that that, you know, the programs that we stopped because of COVID, we're gonna bring back, and we're also looking to expand that.
Excellent. Uh, one last thing, I I want to thank you for your hiring. Uh, I I s- I see the photos uh on Twitter, on Facebook. Uh, I like that direction, so I I appreciate your effort, Chief. Uh, Mr. Clark, I just want to ask you, uh, you uh said that I I guess you're you're doing some programs to to get young people hired in the city. I know we tried to do this uh years ago. Uh, have the metrics improved? Are we still doing like our, you know, pre-COVID or uh, once we have COVID under control, are we still going to uh pay um young kids um wages if they, if we can get them jobs with employers?
Yes, um, we do plan to bring back the uh summer youth employment program um this summer. Uh, we're actually reaching out to, in December, um, is our first reach out to businesses uh within the city, in and around the city, um, to see if they are interested in being a part of the program. So uh, staff has already have, has an outline. Um, so we're on it, and we plan to um, have kids in the program this this coming summer, so looking forward.
Thank you for continuing to do this. I know this is tough. Uh, what would you say is the percentage of placements? Like, you know, is it twenty percent, fifty percent, percent, a hundred percent?
For for a city?
Well, for, yeah, for the the summer employment.
Yeah, we we actually have, um, I believe we have twelve kids that we can place. Um, we have funding for twelve kids uh for the entire summer. So um, you know, that that's all that we can um place. I believe last summer, we had the the summer in nineteen, we had twelve kids. Um, that actually raised from, I want to say, eight kids from a few years before we, when we initially started the program. So um, we we, we we can always, um, you know, do more.
Right.
The the hardest part part of it is finding businesses and employers um to actually accept the kids, because a lot of the kids, it's their first time, it's their first job. Um, and you know, that, you know, we train them and things like that, so.
And so if we can't find them a position, you know, with a private organization or nonprofit, do we allow them to either, you know, work temporarily at the rec department or uh, you know, public works or some other city department so that they can get some uh job experience during the summer?
Yes, we actually uh had several kids that we weren't able to place um working uh with our summer camps and working at our facilities um, uh, in nineteen. So um, I'm not sure if we, uh, we have not tried uh with public works yet, because a lot of their work is technical and and um has, you know, different OSHA standards and other things that they have to uh abide by. But uh, we have taken several kids on um in the recreation department.
Okay, good. That's good to hear. You know, I I I would say, you know, maybe we get some kids to make some copies in public works, you know? But uh, you know, thank you, Mr. Clark, for for all of the work you're doing. And then, you know, I I I know some of my colleagues have talked about uh trying to take mental health and put it at the front of the line uh when it comes to ARPA funds, but I would just say that, you know, um, if we're going to uh change the process that Mr. Fox has laid out, I I would like to see us have a menu of options, not just uh one policy priority. Uh, Mr. Fox, thank you very much for your presentation.
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, not seeing any other hands. Um, any other questions or comments? This evening? No, I'm not seeing any. I just, um, so I guess I I will say thank you. Um, I think, uh, Ms. Wright, I don't know if you got any questions tonight, but I thank you very much uh for uh your presentation. I think many of us are really looking forward to um the revamp of the website. Um, I know it's it's something you've been anxious to do, so um, we're really looking forward to that as well. Um, and I just want to, as many of my colleagues have said, thank you all um very much for your hard work. Uh, we know this is an ongoing conversation that we're having, and um we appreciate your feedback on this. The council will uh roll its sleeves, do a bit more work on this, and we will continue the conversation. So thank you for all the um, the good work and how we are moving forward with these um task force recommendations. Um, I appreciate you all um looking at them, um, taking them in consideration as you're doing your work and helping us move them forward, even as there are ones that we need to do a deeper dive in and take a little bit more time to consider. So thank you all, and I think with that, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, though tonight I haven't had, I haven't had great luck following our agenda, I believe we are done um with our meeting tonight. And um, I will uh say we are adjourned, and we will be back here next Wednesday night at seven thirty. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.